It is seven o'clock, time to call the meeting to order, Amy please hold.
Mr. Marmy?
President.
Mr. Neely?
Here.
Mr. Raff?
Here.
Mr. Ryan?
Here.
Mr. Barker?
Here.
Ms. Blind?
President.
Mr. Chu?
President.
Mr. Cost?
Here.
Mr. Hauser? Ms. Labutus?
Here.
Would you like to stand for the implication and then please remain standing.
Lord, we thank you for a beautiful evening. Lord, we thank you for your hand over this city of God. Lord, we thank you, God, and how you protect our safety forces and we just submit everything to your care and to your trust. God, give us wisdom and discernment. Lord, give us eyes to see. Lord, extend our vision, Lord, to put it within the context of your thoughts and hearts for this place. Thank you for the season, thank you for the rain. In Jesus' name, amen.
Let's show a Buddhist, want to introduce our students tonight?
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to invite Cody and Taylor Partings up to the podium there, you guys come up. They are twins from infiscrated McGuffin Elementary, and Cody shares, he's actually two minutes older.
Cody, raise your hand so we know.
Raise your hands, Cody's the older brother. Alright gentlemen, so when you're ready, start the leaders with the pledge, please.
You guys might have made history, I'm not sure we had that much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good job.
Yeah, next up is caucus, do we have anything that pertains to the agenda tonight, Mr. President?
Mr. Marmy, make a motion to excuse Mr. Hauser, second. Got a motion by Mr. Marmy, second by Mr. Barker, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All kind of same sign. Minutes of the October sixth meeting, twenty twenty-five, I have a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Louboutis, second. Second by Mr. Barker, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All kind of same sign, it passes. Appointments, there are none this meeting. Reports of standing committees, uh, financial service capital permits without objection will be received and filed. Uh, reports from, uh, city officials, Brenda Cooper Tax Ministry, income tax revenue reports for the period ending September thirty, thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, communications. Isle Division Electric Control Transfer Liquor Permit, uh, Moreland Investments, OLC eighty-one Calburn Street to, um, Bruski's Drive through OLC eighty-one Calburn Street, North Ohio. Uh, next up is a Isle Division Electric Control and application to change the stock ownership and electric permit for the Roosters, uh, Northern Corporation. Next up is comments from citizens, is your opportunity to come up and speak. Uh, I'll ask you to give your name and address and try to keep your comments, three minutes, do we have anybody tonight?
I am, uh, Chris Garvis, I live at one zero three Swayford Drive in Ohio. Uh, I represent the, uh, the Champions Network for a recovery, uh, of the police here in, uh, North Ohio, with the existence of our tenth year existence and, um, over the last ten years, we felt hundreds, hundreds will find a way, uh, using a sobriety method, using Bible-based meetings and also important daily contact. Question, but we actually contact these guys every day. I get between twenty and thirty calls a day, people that need help. Um, sometimes I get ten or fifteen texts a day, sometimes it's a message, maybe twenty or thirty a day. It's that busy, um, because we try to really help people get through their struggles, it's all about that. Um, so recently in twenty twenty-two, we've been, we've, we started out in a little house, over by the hotel, they're on Sixth Street, and we moved over, the, the, for a while, they were in a little church, but we moved to, uh, Newark Faith Church, which is on, uh, two sixty-one, two sixty-one Main Street, across the Salvation Army back, and then twenty twenty-two, uh, September twenty-two. And we partnered with a group called Summer Bloom Recovery, they're right down the street from us, they take them right off the street, they do IOPs with them, they drug test them, and they ship them right off, we'll drive them to their place where they gotta go, we'll ship them right off to recovery day, that same day. Uh, they've been doing this for three years now, uh, with them. And, uh, so, so what happened with that is, over the last two and a half, almost three years now, we've sent over a hundred and fifty five people into, uh, reach of in treatment since that time. Uh, and we are currently daily counseling two hundred and fifty individuals. Um, and they're, again, they're staying, so, they're staying, like, and these are, these are people, a lot of you all have, because they've all been through a lot, of course, but in one way, or you guys probably know a lot of these people. Um, and that's who we work with on a daily basis. That's, that's kind of like my, my ministry. I used to be new to ministry, and I'm doing this, this is a lot different, it's a lot harder, but you know what, this is very rewarding. So I wanted to kind of go over a little bit of the rewarding part of that. Uh, so you started with a group called Refuge, um, I don't know if you've heard of them, they're a place over in Plumm's that does the same thing, they're a residential. Um, and we started with them in two thousand and fifteen, just partnered with them. And they did a, they did a survey in two thousand and eighteen called, uh, Social determinants of Health. And it was started by the, uh, first initiated by the World Health Organization back in nineteen forty-eight. The purpose of this was to survey that says how individuals in recovery treatment are positively affecting your community through the survey that highlights each individual's current status and level of effectiveness in community now. So this is a long-term recovery, you're on the other side, and now we're going into being back in fifteen on a regular basis. Okay, that's, that's the process of the survey. So, uh, we did this with forty-two of our individuals between twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. And here's our results, and these will all mean something to you now. Forty-eight percent of them now have full-time employment. That's half of them. Seventy-eight percent, seventy-one percent of them have housing stability. That means you're no longer on the street. Seventy-four, seventy-four percent of them have food security. So they're not, you know, begging for food, or they can do it themselves now. Fifty-seven, fifty-seven percent of them report reliable transportation. That's a big one, that's kind of hardest one to get all of them, that's a big one. Now here's the one that caused, this is one that saves the taxpayers the money, these are what I think is that's three of the big ones, okay? Seventy-six percent of them report not going to the hospital or emergency room for drug and alcohol-related reasons. That's a big one, seventy-six percent, that's a huge number. Eighty-one percent of them have no involvement with the justice system anymore. That's these people we work with on databases. And ninety percent of them are attending care and health, self-help groups on a regular basis. Those three numbers right there are the biggest ones that I went after, and they're the highest ones, and we're going to get better with it. Um, so with all this work being done, as we, as, as caused a big, as a big part of this recent result, from August of twenty twenty-two to September of twenty twenty-five, the overdose mortality rate in Lincoln County has dropped fifty-three percent. We went from fifty-eight to thirty, thirty-one to thirty-three and twenty-four, and then we've only lost ten people this year. Losing any, I'm just terrible. But from those big numbers, numbers to ten, that's amazing to me. So I know I'm moving, and I know God's moving, and if we believe it or not, that God moves, he moves big, okay? Um, I ever lost is bad, but here's another day. We lost thirty-nine people to fentanyl in twenty twenty-two. This year, we've only lost two. That's a huge drop. So I say this because I want to encourage you guys to know, there's people out there in your corner trying to help you get us to be together. And I know addiction is a big one, it was, it was the biggest thing I wanted to tackle, I wanted to go after it, I'm tenacious, I'm not going to stop, it's towards zero. That's my goal. And I know that God's in this, I can say he's there to learn about it, but I know he's in it, he's caused all of this, and every time I meet a big encounter or something happen, boom, he shows up. And we do this on a very, very small budget. But I know he's in it, I know he's doing it, and I just want to report to you guys that you know what's going on, so, there you go, that's why.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
May I have a two one minute?
Good evening, my name is Kim Stuck, and I'm Operations Manager for a new behavioral health, and we are opening an office here in, uh, Newark.
Could I have your address, please?
Yes, one ninety-five Union Street.
Thank you.
And I also personally live here in Lincoln County, Newark. But we are, uh, projecting to open an office here at the Commerce Center, uh, on Union Street, uh, a new approach to behavioral health. And we are also offering substance use disorders, uh, for addiction and sober living homes that we will be wanting to open, uh, approximately two here in Newark. So we want to partner with the community and, you know, work with that, rezoning and those things. But it's called a new integrated recovery, so it's our air program. So we'll offer substance abuse, day treatment programs, uh, for those that are living in the sober house, and then coming to the office to our place of, uh, there at the Commerce Center for day treatment, and having, uh, house manager and those sorts of things. But for on the mental behavior health side, we offer psychiatry, nursing, therapy, and case management. Our assessments don't take too long at all, just within twenty-four to forty-eight hours for an admission, for an intake, to process and, uh, start treatment. So we just wanted to let you know that we are here in the community of Newark, uh, coming to open soon here shortly in mid-November, hopefully. And, uh, as a partner, we'll be offering assessment, psychiatry care, individual therapy, family therapy, case management, med management, those kind of things, care coordination of care, and all ages, we can go into the school and help assist with student, things like that, so. Thank you for my time here tonight, and I look forward to working with all of you and serving the community.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak this time? Alright, next up is ordinance on the second reading, there are none this meeting, ordinance on the first reading, there are none this meeting. Resolution on the second reading, twenty-five dash sixty.
Resolution number twenty-five dash sixty by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Barker, Mr. Cost, Ms. Blind, Ms. Labutus, Mr. Raff. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Newark to prepare and submit to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD a one-year use of funds action plan along with an application for fiscal year twenty twenty-six federal community development grant funds as required by twenty-four CFR part ninety-one point two ten zero for various programs related to housing and community development.
Heard the read, uh, twenty-five dash sixty, what is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmy?
Make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-five dash sixty, second.
Motion by Mr. Marmy, second by Mr. Barker, is there any discussion? Amy please hold a roll.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Neely?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Blind?
Yes.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Hauser? Ms. Labutus?
Yes.
Twenty-five dash sixty passes nine zero, next up is twenty-five dash sixty-one.
Resolution number twenty-five dash sixty-one by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Barker, Mr. Cost, Ms. Blind, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Raff. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Newark to apply for financial support from the state of Ohio twenty twenty-five Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant.
Heard the read in twenty-five dash sixty-one, what is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmy?
Make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-five dash sixty-one, second.
Got a motion by Mr. Marmy, second by Mr. Cost, do we have any discussions? Amy please hold a roll.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Neely?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Blind?
Yes.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Hauser? Ms. Labutus?
Yes.
Twenty-five dash sixty-one passes nine zero, next up is twenty-five dash sixty-two.
Resolution number twenty-five dash sixty-two by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Barker, Mr. Cost, Ms. Blind, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Raff. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Newark to apply for financial support from the state of Ohio Bureau of Workers Compensation Firefighter Exposure to Environmental Elements Grant.
Heard the read in twenty-five dash sixty-two, what is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmy?
Make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-five dash sixty-two, second.
Got a motion by Mr. Marmy, second by Mr. Barker, do we have any discussion? Amy please hold a roll.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Neely?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Blind?
Yes.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Hauser? Ms. Labutus?
Yes.
Twenty-five dash sixty-two, or sixty-three passes nine, or sixty-two passes nine zero. Next up is twenty-five dash sixty-three.
Resolution number twenty-five dash sixty-three by Mr. Raff, Mr. Cost, Mr. Barker, Mr. Marmy, Ms. Blind, Mr. Labutus. A resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service to advertise for bids and enter into contract, contracts subject to the appropriation of funds for the purchase and installation of playground equipment at Wells Park.
Heard the read in twenty-five dash sixty-three, what is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Raff?
Make a motion to adopt twenty-five dash sixty-three, second.
Got a motion by Mr. Raff, second by Mr. Cost, do we have any discussion? Amy please hold a roll.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Neely?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Blind?
Yes.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Hauser? Ms. Labutus?
Yes.
Twenty-five dash sixty-three passes nine zero, next up is twenty-five dash sixty-four.
Resolution number twenty-five dash sixty-four by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Barker, Mr. Cost, Ms. Blind, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Raff. A resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of the municipal corporation.
Heard the read in twenty-five dash sixty-four, what is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmy?
Make a motion to adopt twenty-five dash sixty-four, second.
Got a motion by Mr. Marmy, second by Mr. Barker, do we have any discussion? Amy please hold a roll.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Neely?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Blind?
Yes.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Hauser? Ms. Labutus?
Yes.
Twenty-five dash sixty-four passes nine zero, next up is the resolutions on the first reading, twenty-five, uh, dash sixty-five.
Resolution number twenty-five dash sixty-five by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Barker, Ms. Blind, Mr. Raff. A resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of the municipal corporation.
Twenty-five dash sixty-five will be held to our next meeting November third, next up is twenty-five dash sixty-six.
Resolution number twenty-five dash sixty-six by Mr. Chu, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Barker, Ms. Blind, Mr. Raff. A resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of the municipal corporation.
Twenty-five dash sixty-six will be held to our next meeting, uh, November third, next up is twenty-five dash sixty-seven.
Resolution number twenty-five dash sixty-seven by Mr. Raff, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Barker, Ms. Blind. A resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service of the city of Newark, Ohio City to enter into a contract to sell approximately thirteen thousand seven hundred sixty four feet of timber located on Park for all parcel numbers zero five four dash one eight six six three two dash zero zero dot zero zero zero, zero five four dash one nine nine one five eight dash zero zero dot zero zero zero, zero five four dash one eight nine one nine two dash zero zero dot zero zero zero, zero five four dash one nine six zero seven four dash zero zero dot zero zero zero, zero five four dash one nine nine one five two dash zero zero dot zero zero zero, and zero five five dash one five eight six zero two dash zero zero dot zero 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 located off East Main Street and Ecology Row and owned by the city in Madison Township, Lincoln County, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
You've heard the read in twenty-five dash sixty-seven, it's emergency, what is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Raff?
Make a motion to adopt twenty-five dash sixty-seven, second.
Got a motion by Mr. Raff, second by, uh, Ms. Blind, do we have any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Raff?
Uh, this is a revenue generating endeavor. We're trying to get this done before, uh, at the end of the year, weather, before weather sets in. And, uh, could we read that third parcel number one?
Yeah. Anybody else?
I'll retract that request.
Amy please hold a roll.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Neely?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Blind?
Yes.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Hauser? Ms. Labutus?
Yes.
Twenty-five dash sixty-seven passes nine zero, next up is twenty-five dash sixty-eight.
Resolution number twenty-five dash sixty-eight by Mr. Raff, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Barker, Ms. Blind. A resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement Program and to execute contracts as required.
Twenty-five dash sixty-eight will be held until our next meeting November third, and our last one tonight is twenty-five dash sixty-nine.
Resolution number twenty-five dash sixty-nine by Mr. Raff, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Barker, Ms. Blind. A resolution establishing rates for the stormwater utility service charge as authorized by qualified ordinance of the city of Newark, Ohio.
Twenty-five dash sixty-nine will be held to our next meeting, uh, November third. That completes our ordinance resolutions tonight, next up is your last opportunity for citizen comments, do we have anybody?
Oh, Stephen Smith, two thirty-seven by the Court. Just want to comment that, um, your voting now, early voting underway. I urge everyone who has not voted yet to be sure they can vote. The, uh, last day for voting is Tuesday of, uh, November, of November. Should have had that on the top of my head, but it was four. I want to, November fourth, thanks. Uh, I want to, uh, caution you that, um, as you go in vote, be certain that, uh, anyone that might attempt to influence your votes, uh, as you go in, this is, uh, not allowed. Uh, there are limits to, uh, uh, the space where people can do, uh, electioneering and the spot where they cannot be marked. Uh, anyone that approaches, uh, inside those is, um, is my understanding breaking the, breaking law. Uh, if that happens, I would encourage you not to engage these people, um, but to, but to mention it to the, uh, election officers inside to vote for elections, for voting. Uh, with that, I'll just want to reiterate, elections are the, one of the most important things we do as citizens, please be sure.
Anybody else? City officials? Law director?
I just want to say thank you to Chris Garvis and Champions, uh, for doing, preaching that. I, I know how hard that is, having taken on over, um, but it is good work, it's satisfying work, and, you know, God does move, and so thank you for talking about that. Mr. Chu, thank you for coming in, and we'll be talking soon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I will pass to, thank you.
Mr. Marmy?
Thank you, Mr. President, I need to call a finance committee meeting for November the third. I want to, first of all, encourage everyone to get out to vote and make sure that, uh, you're supporting the things that are important in your, with your community, as well as the candidates that you are wishing to move the, whether it's the city, the county, or the state forward. And then also, I'm going to just comment once again about the finances of the city of Newark. There is an issue on the ballot that is, uh, very important, and the fact that city services will be cut if it does not, uh, pass, and some of those services are things that are near and dear to our heart, uh, when you have, you know, um, close to fifty percent of your budget goes to safety forces, you have to cut the budget, where do you think the majority is going to come from? The other thing is infrastructure, which is our second priority, safety is first, and infrastructure, uh, paving to be, once again, no zero dollars flowing towards paving. So therefore, I encourage folks to get educated and not to just listen to those that are out there stating rhetoric about how, uh, you know, the, the city is just trying to pad things and spend money on things. Uh, that is not occasion, we, we need the money to maintain our current level of service. This is not to increase services, this is to maintain our current level of service. So making sure that folks are very aware of that. Uh, I want to give a shout out to the Law Director's Office, and she mentioned the terminology home court. Um, I am hearing that, I haven't had the opportunity to visit yet, and a key word yet. I do want to, uh, visit and make sure that I'm able to observe. But I am hearing nothing but positive and huge accolades to our Law Director's Office and, uh, what that has done for our community. And it's greatly appreciated. Um, I, I will be here to say, I'll, I'll actually state that I scrutinize the fact that, are we going to spend a dime on this? And the answer was no. And we have not, and we benefited tremendously on the positive side because of a lot of the reduction in expenses, like what, uh, the gentleman indicated before. So thank you very much, appreciate what you have done and what your folks have done, and with that, I will pass.
Thank you, Mr. Marmy. Mr. Neely?
Uh, thank you, we pass.
Mr. Raff?
Thank you, I would also like to encourage everybody to vote anytime between now and November fourth. Uh, Mr. Barker, we appreciate the work that you're doing, those are very impressive numbers. Uh, great work, and obviously with God's blessing. We appreciate you, please keep that up. Uh, though recently that we're going to be putting a roundabout on Thorwood, um, that is obviously in anticipation of future traffic. I'm sure that will be welcomed, uh, and well needed. Also, in anticipation of future traffic, I would encourage Mr. Mayor to look at plans to open the Cherry Valley Bridge. Also echo what Mr. Marmy said about the levy, uh, that is definitely in a great need. I'll hold a service committee meeting for November third, and with that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Raff. Mr. Ryan?
I'm Mr. President. Uh, yeah, I just want to echo the levy, um, I mean, I think it was eleven, twelve dollars per person per month, a raise, you know, the tax. So if that isn't worth, pretty much like a Netflix subscription, you know, if, if that isn't, you know, our maintaining our quality of life isn't worth a Netflix subscription per month. You know, that's, that, I mean, that's kind of the way, you, you might have to break it down to people, you know, I think it's worth it, you know, I would cancel mine, you know? So, with that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Barker.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, I would just echo again, as Mr. Raff said, uh, Mr. Marmy's comments of a levy and the need for it, and the fact that services will be cut unfortunately if it doesn't pass. And it's not, as some have alluded in the media and in, in other places in different public meetings, it's not padding of our, of our coffers at all. The other thing I want to mention is, uh, Mr. Raff mentioned the Showman Arch Bridge. Uh, I've had a lot of calls, I have family that live over on that end, it was a planning commission meeting, and, uh, one of the planning commission members directly asked during it, this last meeting, about that bridge because of the apartment, uh, complex that's being proposed on the other side of Cherry Valley, another commercial development. Um, so I would ask as well that we give serious consideration to that, uh, re-up to that bridge, so with that, I will pass. Thank you, Mr. Barker, Ms. One.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for speaking so well, Mr. Marmy. I appreciate that. You know, the levy is very important, and again, please disassociate yourself from misinformation. Do your homework, the facts are out there. And again, thank you for speaking so well to it, I'd like to thank volunteers that have been coming out every Saturday morning, uh, to help our seniors prepare for winter and, uh, to help, uh, how I say, build community in places where, where it's been at for a while. So I want to thank them for coming out again and again and again. And I want to thank, uh, Mr. Garvis, I, it hasn't been ten years, but yeah, I had the honor of, um, joining Mr. Garvis nine years ago. And it has been an adventure. And honestly, I've worked on both coasts and many inner cities, but I haven't seen anything that works quite like Champions does. You know, many have six-figure budgets with six-figure salaries, and, you know, a stack of employees a mile deep, and with the stack of expenses, but these guys get along with on almost nothing. And, and they have these kind of results. And again, God is blessing you, God is honoring you, and just keep on doing things.
Thank you, Mr. Chu. Thank you, Mr. President, I will pass. Mr. Ross?
I'd like to thank Mr. Garvis and Ms. Strick for coming on this evening, I just know all the services they have to offer. I had the honor of attending home court, and it was just, it is incredible. And I want to thank the Law Director, who put this together in there, uh, something I want to attend fairly regularly. Uh, amazing the results they're getting and how well this is being done, that'll pass.
Thank you. Mr. Louboutis?
Thank you, Mr. President, um, I would like to thank Mr. Garvis, I always appreciate him coming and sharing the statistics, thank you for, uh, showing up every day for the past ten years, and doing what you do, and what your, what your network does as well, I appreciate that. Ms. Chu, thank you for being here, welcome to the community, looking forward to working with you. Uh, also, I'd like to remind everybody to vote somewhere between now and November fourth, and as other members of the, uh, council have said, support the levy because we need it for next year, without our own bets.
Thank you. Um, I sense if I ever witness a miracle or have a miracle happen to you in life, or your brother, buddy? There was one yesterday, Cleveland, the Browns won. And I wasn't there. Our next meeting is November third, I have a motion.
Motion by Mr. Strick.